I think.
Mine's not doing anything, Mr. Chair.
Well. What did you push? Oh, there you go. Just hit the button. There you go.
Hit the face.
Yeah, hit the face, wake it up. All right, now we'll have implication by Commissioner Brown.
Dear Heavenly Lord, thank you so much for gathering us here tonight. Please lay your hands on each and every one of us, give us conviction, give us strength, and most importantly, Lord, give us the full commitment to lay all of our business at your feet. Let us serve you before we serve anything more. We are so grateful for your grace and for your thanksgiving that you have given us in this season. As we look back at this year, Lord, we just give all the glory and grace to you, and we ask that you bless the new year to come with all of your goodness. Lord, we thank you so much for this day, and in your name we hold a prayer. Amen.
Amen. Now, from Pitt County Early College, Mr. Corporal, leading us in our pledge.
Good evening, I'm Jeremiah Corporal, a freshman at Pitt Early College High School, and currently I am a part in the Bible Club and Duke TLC. Thank you for having me this evening. At this time, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated, thank you, and have a good evening.
All right, my last official act, and I will turn it over to Mr. Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. For clarity and uniformity, I wanted to begin by reading our rules of procedure. If you'll indulge me, I do want to provide some information prior to getting to the election of chairman and vice chair. So, your rules of procedure state at the first regular meeting of December, the chairman shall turn the meeting over to the county attorney, who shall preside over the board for the election of officers for the following year. The board shall elect a chairman and vice chairman from among its members, who shall then immediately assume their positions for the ensuing year. Any commissioner may nominate any other commissioner for chairman or vice chair, or may nominate the current chairman or vice chair for a second term. Once all commissioners have had an opportunity to make a nomination, the board shall vote, with the last nomination being voted on first, and continuing in reverse order. A supermajority vote of the entire board is necessary to elect the current chairman or vice chairman for a second term, otherwise a simple majority is required. Before I open up nominations, I wanted to provide some further guidance on multiple nominations. So, North Carolina general statutes require the rules of procedure to be in keeping with the spirit of generally accepted principles of parliamentary procedure. In following general accepted principles, the balloting is repeated for that office as many times as necessary to obtain a majority vote for a single candidate. This means individuals are never removed from candidacy on the next ballot unless they voluntarily withdraw. So, once the nomination process is closed, we will vote for the office in reverse order of nominations. Each commissioner is allowed one vote per round. By way of example, if a commissioner votes for candidate A, he or she cannot vote for candidate C until the next round of voting. Voting will continue until a majority is reached, or a supermajority for current chair or vice chair. After each round, an individual may withdraw their name from consideration. Is there any questions or formal motions prior to opening up nominations? Okay? At this time, nominations are now open for the chair of the Pitt County Board of Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Commissioner Ann Floyd Huggins for chair.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins is now nominated.
Mr. Chair, I nominate Mark Smith for chairman.
Commissioner Mark Smith is now nominated. Are there any other nominations?
Mr. Chair, I nominate Mary Perkins-Williams.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams is now nominated. Any further nominations? Hearing none, nominations are now closed.
And Matt, just so I'm clear, you can only vote one time in the first round?
Correct, each round of voting, because this is a nominate and elect process. So, each round of voting entitles you to one vote. Once that vote is made for that candidate, you should not vote for any other candidate until the next round. You can change your vote at the next round if we have not reached a majority at that time. Any further questions? Okay. Again, with nominations being closed, we will vote in reverse order. Yes, yes.
Just to clarify, so, in the event that, so, since it sounds like pool voting, am I correct, so that you would, we cast a vote per round?
Correct.
And so, we only vote yea, we do not vote nay?
So, because the way our system is set up, you could vote no for that candidate, but that's not saying you're voting against the candidate, it's just saying you're not voting for that candidate during this round. And that's just the way kind of our electronic system is set up for everybody to vote.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? All right, so, again, voting in reverse order will be Commissioner Perkins-Williams. So, all those in favor of Commissioner Perkins-Williams, please vote yes at this time. Moving on to Commissioner Mark Smith. All those in favor of Commissioner Smith, please vote yes at this time.
The last vote, vote two.
If you could just vote no, since you had voted yes on the prior ballot.
So, I got to vote no.
Correct.
Why do I have to vote no?
So.
Because you are the usual vote.
Oh, okay.
Now, for this final, in this first round, the final vote is for Commissioner Ann Floyd Huggins.
So, I voted for Ann?
You are usual, you can't vote for Ann either.
So, again, all those in favor of Commissioner Floyd Huggins. So, again, no majority at this first round of voting.
And you still only get one vote, correct?
Correct, one vote per round. Is there, and at this point, is there anyone that would like to withdraw their names from the nomination?
Are we voting for the same people?
So, there's still three people that have been nominated. You, as an individual, whoever can be removed, can remove themselves from the nomination if they would like. If not, again, there will be voting in the reverse order, with Commissioner Perkins-Williams being voted on first. Is there anybody at this point that would like to remove their names from nomination?
I'll remove my name. That mean I get to vote?
Again, one vote. So, now there will be, we will vote in reverse order again, with Commissioner Smith being voted on first. So, all those in favor of Commissioner Smith, please vote yes. The yays have it. Congratulations, Commissioner Smith. We will now move nominations, and will now open nominations for vice chair of the Pitt County Board of Commissioners.
Nominate Ann Floyd Huggins?
Commissioner Floyd Huggins is now nominated. Do I hear any further nominations?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I nominate Benji Holloman.
Commissioner Holloman is now nominated. Do I hear any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Nominations are now closed. Again, we will vote in reverse order. So, all those in favor of Commissioner Holloman, please vote yes. And that is a majority. Congratulations, Commissioner Holloman. And now I yield the floor to the chair for a recess and adjustment of seating arrangements.
Okay, we'll call our December first meeting back to order, and we are on number six, so I'll turn it back over to Matt for rules of procedure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, as you can see, the next item is rules of procedure. Your rules of procedure currently stated the first meeting in December. One of the orders of business shall be for the board to adopt, request for change or confirmation, the board's rules of procedure. Attached to your agenda, you will find the current 2024 adopted rules, as well as suggested revisions proposed by Commissioner Nunley.
Were there any highlighted changes from last year's rule of procedures? That'd be my first question.
Yes, beginning on page 23 in your agenda package, there is a proposed amendment by Commissioner Nunley that seeks to discuss a rotation schedule for the position of chair and vice chair. And then, beginning on page 27, is a proposed amendment from Commissioner Nunley with regard to the consent agenda, items for consent. So, Mr. Chairman, you may entertain a motion, or if you wish, we can relax the rules for discussion prior to entertaining a motion.
Do we have any discussion on those two items of change?
Mr.
Everything else is the same?
Yes, and if I may, I would like to go ahead and get out of the way, because I don't imagine it's a lengthy discussion. My second, my, my, my second proposal regarding consent agenda, I think it's just a reaffirmation of the rule as it's stated. The rule previously read, "On objection by any board member to inclusion of any item on the consent agenda, that item shall be removed from consent agenda forthwith." It's however recently been our practice to have to have an action and a vote on that. Feel like that's a little inefficient. And, and so, I just propose that we, we make clear that there's not, there's not necessary to make a motion. If it's not unanimous, it's not consent, and we'll just handle it in ordinary course without having to have an action of majority for that. So, that, that's the reason for that change, and I'd make a motion that we, we accept that amendment.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to accept that. Do I hear a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second, and we're gonna put on the machine there, Matt. Okay. This is just for that item. Who's missing? Commissioner Perkins-Williams, yep. Okay, all right, that motion passed. Commissioner Nunley, you wanna collaborate on your, on your other item?
Sure, on the other item. And then, this is merely just, I felt like it was ripe for discussion. At national conference this year, myself and a number of commissioners were in attendance in Philadelphia. And one of the things that I particularly love about being around county commissioners is how, regardless of where national politics are, where state politics are, that, that county commissions do the work of the people on a daily basis, and really come to work. And I feel like, for the most part, are able to, to, to advance the business of the people without, without mechanisms of power from the national or state level. I guess, unduly influencing our decisions of power. Since my time on the board, I've, there are only a few meetings where I feel like partisanship, and I'm just gonna be frank, partisanship gets involved, and that has to do with the appointment and rotation of our chair and vice chair. And, and so, I felt like it was appropriate that we just have a conversation, and I've proposed, and I'm not even sure I'm in support of it, but I felt like it was good to talk about whether or not this board wanted to consider removing partisanship from consideration as who sits on the chair. And I really, that kind of thought about not bringing it, but then I really did think that, you know, honestly, I could say that I believe it, that every single person on this board could bring something valuable to the leadership role and in the chair seat, regardless of party affiliation. And, and, but the reality of it is, we are not, we don't live in a state or country where we often are in a position to be able to, to have those types of rotations. So, I thought it was worth talking about. Again, I'm not, by putting it on here, I'm not saying that I'm gonna make a motion for its approval. But, I wanted to just lay out, and, and the purpose is pretty clear here, that's to preserve equity and opportunities for service, to provide predictable leadership session, and that really is looking at staff and, and the membership, so that it's really clear about what staff can expect, and to prevent partisanship from influencing procedural leadership roles unrelated to policy. And, and, you know, I think that maybe in some boards, this may not be appropriate, but we have a really equal, our, our seats are all equal. We all can, can manage business from, from our seats. We can request items for decision, we can request items for consent to be removed, we can, we, we all are equal up here. And it really is a role of facility, I think, in large part, a lot of times, with regards to interactions with staff, and helping this meeting run efficiently. Why, why have experience as kind of the delineator? And not, in, in doing that, it's just kind of like that seemed to be the only real option in the sense that, you know, how do you set, how do you set an order or otherwise? But with, with just the assumption that with longer service, you, there's more institutional knowledge that you obtain. And so, that's why I chose to have seniority as being the, the benchmark in my proposal. Anyway, I don't, you know, I think that it does provide also an opportunity if this board feels, you know, feels strongly to go outside of order, if there's a situation whereby, just, just as now, if we want someone to serve twice in the chair seat or the vice chair seat, a supermajority can, can, can override the order upsetting the outcome. But, in, in, in doing so, and again, I think the big part of this is just transparency and trying to structurally take, take us out of any ditches that we might fall, fall into, that it's clear that the rotation is really, any, any override is really, should be for an extraordinary situation, right? And so, this is really just a proposal, just if we're all really equal, to be really be treated that way. And, but I do understand that, and I'll, and I'll, and I'll hush, I do understand that there are, there are benefits to the way that we handle it now, right? And not all of that, I think, can be discounted, but this was just something I thought was maybe ripe for discussion. And if anyone else feels like we'll talk about that, it's fine, if not, I'll just shut my mouth and I may.
Any other, any other comments, any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion not to approve that attachment, number two. I think, I represent District C, the voters put me here to be their voice, and that voice is expressed through my vote. If we do a rotation process and take away that vote, then it's, I'm not representing the people in my district. So, I make the motion not to approve it.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor not to approve this, I'll call an amendment. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
I thought I pressed the button.
Go ahead.
I maybe don't understand the system as I don't. And I did have the button pressed. So, that mean you still call on me?
You have the floor.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I, I would like to ask the maker of the change, you remember when we first came to this board and I was saying there should be an automatic rotation, and, and that everybody should have an opportunity to serve, and there was a big outpour of no, that shouldn't be, and that we did it like we were doing it? So, why the change right, right now, all of a sudden? I just want to know, because, you know, I made it more than once at the beginning of this board term, and everybody was not for automatic rotation. So, I just want some clarity as to why it is necessary now, Mr. Chris Nunley, since you made that motion before, that we shouldn't do it.
Well, Mr. Chair, it would be outside of bounds for me to respond directly to another commissioner, but with your authority, I'm.
I have no, I have no issues with you responding.
All right.
We have another discussion.
Might be entertaining.
So, you know, I guess outside of this being an open board, and, 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 and we all should have open minds to any issue, right? Mary.
Excuse me, you know what, there is a roaring back here. I'm not the only one who hear it, and if you talk right into the mic, we might hear everything you're saying. I just want you to know that there is a limitation to this roaring back here.
Sure, sure. So, I, I don't recall directly opposing that position previously. I do recall it being discussed outside of commission, outside of open session, and for the same, for the same reason that I have reservations about adopting a rotation, then I still have them, right? I believe it was you and former Commissioner Coulson that, that, that raised it with me. And at the time, you know, I, that was a while ago, I mean, I think that was probably seven years ago.
I don't know how, I know that was one of my songs.
It was a while ago. But no, no, I think the reason that I drafted and proposed is really out of the spirit of, of, of open dialogue on the board, right? Something that I feel like we yearly find ourselves seemingly at loggerheads over. I personally am frustrated by it, because I think we did good work together. But, we could do better work, and I think having an open discussion about how to do that work is beneficial, whether or not I support it this time or not. And I'm still on the fence, so I may, I might support his motion not to adopt it, but that's why, Mary, because I listen to you.
Thank you, Commissioner, we have a motion and a second on the floor to not approve this amendment, correct? All right.
And we're voting on Mark's, on Matt's, right? I want to know, Mr. Chairman, I want some.
We're, we're voting on Commissioner Manning's motion to not approve the amendment.
I understand that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Hit my button. I'll win that.
Okay, motion passed. All right, we'll move on to number seven, individual surety bonds, back over to you, Matt.
Yes, Mr. Chair, last item in our rules of procedure is addressing individual surety bonds for our officers, which includes, I may get to the rules of procedure, includes the registered deeds, the sheriff, the finance officer, and the tax collector. This is an annual examination that's required by statute. As you can see on the abstract, it lists the bond amount, the position, individual name, and the statute that is required, or that provides for the bond being held. If there's no amendments to that, we just ask that you approve the surety bond as presented.
Do you have any questions?
Mr. President?
Got a motion and a second? Okay, motion passed. We'll move on to approval of the agenda, and I think we need to take number seven, Madam Manager, is that correct, number seven off?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this afternoon we received an upset bid on that property, and so I'd ask that you remove item for consent, number seven.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
To approve.
Okay, we got a motion, I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, Madam Manager, any public addresses to the board?
If no one signed up.
Okay. And we'll move on to items for report, and we have the quarterly public health report. Mr. Gray.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and Madam Manager. Have a brief quarterly update for public health. I'll start out with our clinic visits, our biggest division. Last month, we had a big month, in October, we had one thousand. We had 1,162 visits. So, so far this year, we're at 4,147 clinical visits through the end of October, so we're meeting our goal that we set out to do for 1,000 visits a month on average. Preliminary numbers that we've gotten in so far today from the month of November were a little over 800 because we had three holidays and a lot of staff vacations. So we anticipated a little bit of a decrease in November, but I have final numbers in the next update. So a 73% show rate for our last available month was in October. Since the last quarter, we've been doing these just-in-time school assessments and immunizations. We had 96 child immunizations over two days and 114 child health provider visits. That's a huge amount of physicals to make sure those kids can stay in school. That took a whole lot of our staff and a whole lot of ECU staff, public health nurses from the school system to all come together for those two days to get that many child health assessments done. Nutrition, 4,932 total participants, so our baseline that we need to have every month is 4,347, so we're at 114% of the baseline target. Now, WIC was affected, just like SNAP by the government shutdown, we kept having further back dates than SNAP was having, so we never really were in danger of seeing any cuts to the benefits. But that's around 380,000 to 400,000 a month in benefits that go out to those participants in WIC every month. So we want to make sure that people knew that they could use their benefits throughout all the uncertainty of the shutdown, so we did a lot of social media around that. We looked at all the changes that the WIC statewide was making to save some money, to make sure they didn't run out before the end of November related to organic foods, just to make sure that people knew that we were there. We did a lot of media and a lot of lives on Facebook and a lot of answering questions for folks to make sure they knew that program was still secure. For environmental health through October 25, I'll go over onsite wastewater, so 547 site visits. Construction alterations for new construction was 52 throughout October, repairs 16, and we issued 37 operational permits, 12 well sites evaluated, 13 permits issued. Total inspections for food and lodging were 632, and out of that 632, 328 were restaurants. You can see we have 72 food stands, food trucks, school lunchrooms, schools, childcare centers, residential care, hotels, 35 swimming pools, and then 18 tattoo artists. A lot of consultations, both in onsite and food and lodging, over 4,000 so far through October, a little over 1,000 a month consultations. That's people calling in or people reporting an issue with a restaurant, or I want to start a restaurant, I want to start a food truck. We advise them on that. So a lot of staff work in consultations, and then in vector control as well. I do want to, people are real excited when they do get 100 on their average, so this is Belvoir Elementary School. That's their cafeteria, so they got 100 on their score, and they were real proud of that. We're also real proud of Scott Seabor and Ray Griffin. They recently obtained their delegation of authority to permit private drinking water wells and onsite wastewater systems. That takes a lot of time to get those certifications, so they're both on board and they're helping us tackle, making sure we cut down on any wait time. So having two new staff in there is really helping out with that. Give a dental update, Dr. Vinson, throughout, from July 7th through November 14th, since seen 142 patients, that's about an 80% show rate. We're averaging about 8.4 patients a day. We're at our third school right now, Fauklin Elementary. Opioid settlement, our stakeholder meeting we had last month, on October 21st, or October 21st, we hosted, 46 participants came to that meeting over at the Activity Center, so a really good turnout. We covered updates on the settlement, the upcoming application process, our website updates for the county, and feedback on potential resources platform for all those people to use. To date, we've identified 122 individual organizations considered community stakeholders, and we've partnered with Edgemont County to host a regional opioid coordinators meeting in December here in Pitt County to discuss opportunities for collaboration and shared strategy across the Northeast region. Last year, we outthrew a little over $625,000 in the last round, and this round, we're anticipating that being over $1 million in this next grant application round. I want to mention our Nurse Family Partnership. They had the event called The Spotlight Is On You back in October. That's where we gave awards to a lot of our participants and advisory board members. We had two of our moms getting awards. We had Danielle John and Norma Warren for being on the community advisory board, and Sue Howe with ECU School of Medicine got an award for her volunteering with our group. I'll give you a quick update on the pit stop and share a couple photos. We hopefully this spring have a soft opening, kind of a launch, an event for everybody to come out, but the construction's mostly complete. The immediate next steps are Wi-Fi and internet, AV for the activity room, additional furniture, and partner engagement website and a calendar and system development. So that's the activity room, after it was finished construction, you'll see a couple pictures later on of the furniture inside. This is some down the hallway, some of our equipment rooms and exam rooms, new bathrooms throughout the facility, lab facilities. This is our new dental suite coming in. This is the furniture here in our exam rooms, two telepsychiatry suites, and then furniture in the activity rooms up front, and then a waiting area to the left side of the building, and then computer rooms throughout the building and huddle rooms for the staff. Nationalize Now was October 7th. We had a big presence out there downtown Greenville to let the community know what services we have through WIC, Nurse Family Partnership, education, environmental health, and all of our divisions. Health education right now is flu season, always want to mention that. We have seen an uptick in flu A just over the last two weeks. So far, no RSV or no COVID rises at the same time, so we're seeing that normal activity for flu A starting to pick back up. We did a lot for Halloween food safety. We're doing a lot more social media and videos for the, for the community to make sure they're safe at Halloween and all different events. Car seat safety, Terry Quinn, our childcare help consultant, helped with a car seat safety event in Winterville Fire and Rescue. Since the last update, a couple days later, we had our 30th anniversary for the Pitt Partners for Health, so I wanted to make sure we highlight that. That celebrated 30 years of community impact for that group. That was a really nice event over at ECU Health. Pitt County Schools have their Health Sciences Academy. We always go to that and participate. I do want to mention healthy food, so we have plots over at the Making Pitt Fit Community Garden and the backside of the Health Department, and we use those, that produce in our diabetes classes and courses throughout, throughout our programs. And so that's really big help, and I think Drew Liggins over there, he helped us out, helps us out weeding and all that type of stuff at both of those gardens. I mentioned diabetes. We had a Living Well with Diabetes event a few weeks ago, Coach McNeil, this is over at the Activity Center. We do that, that's a real big event for diabetes participants. And then Laquila Lewis with ENC Prevent Diabetes, our Minority Diabetes Prevention Program. Pitt County is the hub for that program for all the counties around us, and we held an event in New Bern called Healthy Barbershop Conversations a few weeks back. And then I do want to shout out the Greenville Civic Ballet. They donated $2,500 to our breast and cervical cancer control program. That's our BSET program. That provides free or low-cost cancer screenings and diagnostic services for eligible women. So that's their spring event. They raise money for that, and then they donate that to our program. So real pleased about that. Thank you. And then I'll close with our wrapping up, our wellness rodeo for the employees of Pitt County, our flu clinic this year. So we had 16 flu shot clinics throughout the county, 11 different sites. We increased our number from last year. We had 308 in 2024, we had 325 in 2025. And just kind of an idea, if those, if those 325 employees of the county had gone to, say, a private office or something like that, they would have had an admin fee. That fee averaged about $27, so that saves right there about $8,700 for the county, just in the admin fee alone for that. So every year, we want to increase the number of county folks that get flu shots through our onsite clinics. Just a few photos from that, and with that, I'll wrap up and answer any questions y'all might have.
Any questions for Mr. Gray? Gray, thank you for your report.
Appreciate it.
Okay, moving on. Madam Manager, your report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, your next meeting date is December 15th, in this room at 6:00 PM, and then later on the agenda, you'll approve your meeting calendar for calendar year 2026, which will set forth the remainder of your dates. A reminder of the Holiday Safety Fair, which will take place at the Alice F. Keane District Park on December 4th from 4:00 to 6:00. That's always a successful event led by Pitt County Emergency Management. Item C, a reminder that December 6th from 9:00 to 12:00 this Saturday is Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day at the Pitt County Transfer Station. So any hazardous waste that you have to dispose of, please bring to the transfer station between 9:00 and 12:00 that day for proper disposal. Item D, if you've not already communicated with the clerk, please let her know your intentions to attend or not attend the 2026 NACO Legislative Conference, February 21st to the 24th in Washington, DC. Early registration discounts and on Wednesday. So for, excuse me, for those attending, we want to take advantage of that early bird registration and also assure that you're in the host hotel for ease in walking. Item E, if Michael Hardy would come forward to the podium. It is my absolute pleasure to introduce you to and welcome Michael Hardy, who will serve as our new Chief Financial Officer for Pitt County Government. He started on Monday. He has already taken his oath of office and is bonded, so I wanted to give him a moment if there's anything he wanted to share.
I just want to say thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. My first stint at local government was in county government, so it was nice to return back. I look forward to working with all the departments during the budget process, and then also the fiscal oversight of the whole county as well, and all the big things that are happening with Pitt County. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. We look forward to working with you.
Item F is a reminder that December 7th to 13th, Pitt County will observe Winter Weather Preparedness Week, where we encourage residents to prepare for winter weather by updating their emergency plans and restocking emergency supply kits. Emergency management reminds our community that winter weather can be unpredictable, and the time is now to plan and prepare. Ready.gov and ReadyNC.gov are resources to find winter weather safety tips. Individuals are encouraged to stay informed during winter storms by signing up for local weather and community alerts at PittCountyNC.gov/hyperreach. And you can learn more about Winter Weather Preparedness Week on the county's website or the, our Pitt County Facebook page. Item G, just a touch point, because I have not reported back to you on this in some time, the fire feasibility study that the board ordered earlier this year is on schedule. We anticipated a report in November or December of this year. It is on target to come to us at the end of December. So I want you to know that's progressing nicely, and we will give a more formal report on those findings and share them with the board most likely in January of 2026, when we get that report at the end of December. And then, Mr. Chairman, if you'll allow, I have one additional item that I wanted to let you know. At each of your place settings, I copied a chapter from a UNC School of Government book in response to questions from various commissioners on how we budget for school capital and operating expenditures. Please take a moment to read that chapter at your leisure. We currently budget by lump sum, which is the more common way that counties budget, but there is also a way to budget for schools by purpose and function, and it explains that process within those materials. If budgeting by purpose and function is something that this board would like to consider, then we'll need to further direction on that before we enter into budget season. And that's all that I have.
Okay, thank you, Madam Manager. Next up is items for consent. Remember, we relude item number seven. Have a motion to approve the items for consent?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. And Matt, are you going to cover item number seven? Do we need to have some, any discussion on that?
So, no, we will move it until the 15th. So the 10 days ran today. Today, we received a bid for the property, 10% over the $2,000 that was offered. So we need to re-advertise, have to run for 10 days, and we will continue to do that process until there's no further upset bids, and then at this point, we'll bring it back to the board. So we'll set it for the 15th. That will be within the 10 days or after the 10 days, and then at that point, if there's no further upset bids, we can take care of it. And I'll watch and move to the chamber.
Okay. Great, thank you, Matt. Okay, items for decision, Madam Manager?
On page 58, you have a proposed meeting calendar for year 2026. It mirrors, it is very similar to your calendar for the current year with two meetings or one meeting and a capital budgeting workshop, which will also include strategic planning in January, two meetings in February, March, one in April, two in May, June, one in July, two in August, one in September, and then two in October, November, and December. All meetings are proposed to begin at 6:00 PM. It is within the discretion of this board to adopt the meeting calendar as proposed or to modify any dates or meeting times if that's the preference of the board.
Okay, what's the pleasure, the board?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the 2026 calendar.
I'm sorry, I missed the second. I have Melvin McLawhorn and Nunnely is what I have.
Okay, that brings us to Commissioner comments. I will start from my left, Commissioner Manning.
No comments, sir.
Commissioner Nunnely.
No comment.
Commissioner Huggins.
Yeah.
Commissioner McLawhorn. Commissioner?
Congratulations, Chairman and Vice Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Brown?
No comment.
Commissioner? Okay.
No comments.
Not many comments tonight.
I know.
Okay, I think, I think we have a closed session, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Make a motion to go in a closed session. Do everyone?
Mr. Chair, briefly.
Yes.
Me and the clerk are trying to, there was a motion and second for items for consent. There was a vote on that, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we have a motion to go in a closed session?
Motion.
And if I may read the, if I may read this briefly.
Yes, please.
It's been suggested for this body to go in a closed session is consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve attorney-client privilege under North Carolina General Statute 143-31811A3, which privileges hereby acknowledged.
Thank you, Matt. I spoke. Okay, thank you. We'll go in the closed session.